New business.
New business what?
Um, historical society lease is moving down to um nine D.
Okay.
So. And the nine A is the Knox County Deputy Contract Housing Allowance. What's that?
Yep.
Good. Right, I'll call this town of Vinalhaven Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty four. Roll call Tom Anthony, Lad Olson, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, Pam Alley, Elizabeth Bunker, and Marjorie Stratton. Motion to approve the agenda.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
So moved.
All in favor? Uh, three minutes, move the minutes from February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Four, communications.
For that.
Did you want to do that letter from?
I just did that, didn't I? Oh, okay.
Or do you want to wait till the downtown project, the letter from?
Yeah, let's wait.
Okay.
Um, four, skip back to four, proven sign churches warrant number thirty seven, I thought we just said that.
You get the minutes.
Ah, so. Okay.
It's been a long day, yeah, it's okay.
I know, they're not serious about this.
Me, me too, but you for different reasons, so it's all good.
Yeah, well, my brain's mush right now, sorry.
Seven nine.
A proven sign, uh, we got that, did we second and, oh, okay. Um, six speakers from the floor. Seeing none.
Seeing what?
Seeing none, speakers from the floor. Raise your hand, please, we have a speaker, okay, Wes.
I presented a complaint to Marjorie's office, she was on the mainland, is that gonna be looked at tonight?
Not, uh, no, not tonight because it's a personnel matter.
Well, it's a matter of our ordinance not being enforced and the building is scheduled to be torn down on April first, which is two weeks away.
Understood, but we can't discuss it since it's. Discuss.
I mean, it's, I would hope you could stay that order, I mean, you know, the. I forget, would. Can we talk about, I mean, if you decide not to do anything, that's one thing.
No, that's not it at all, Wes, not, it's, that's nothing at all to do with it, but Marjorie and I concur that perhaps it's more of a personnel matter versus um how y'all looking at it.
If you don't, if you don't deal with it, the damage is done. You know, I, I, I just, if we just put this new provision in our ordinance that if something's gonna tear down a building, they need to apply for a demolition permit and be advertised for thirty days in case the neighbor wants to take it or.
Correct.
You know, there's a number of things, I mean.
Uh. Marjorie, maybe you should explain to Wes. I mean, that's, we.
Well, we just, we just went and reviewed the complaint and it's obviously a complaint against an employee. Um, and we are simply, we're simply unable to talk about an employee in an open meeting and, and the other point is that if we do talk about somebody, that employee has to be present so that they can defend themselves. So. Um. Uh, you know, I don't intend to talk about an employee without them being here and without it being in an executive session, and we have to give them notice that we're gonna be discussing it.
Ellen?
So, given that situation, which is understandable, is it possible for the collect board just to say that that um, that the building can't be, the sell, sale off can't be torn down April first until this matters discussed and whether or not the process is what process was accurate and whether or not there should be a permitting process? We don't believe the building is dangerous under the rules, the state statute. And we, we've worked very hard for two years to revise the zone ordinance. And this was a really important part of the zone ordinance that was approved by the town. And it's, one of the things that it was to do was to protect historic structures, which the sale off is. And if, if you can't act on it until after Fay comes back, then the building will already have been torn down. That building's been there since before nineteen hundred.
What, when?
On the waterfront.
Can you postpone the demolition and?
We're not responsible for that, it's the Star Hope Foundation who's gonna demolish it.
Can tell me, Phil, need in?
For it's April first.
I'm feeling a bit lost.
We received a complaint today that concerns an employee.
Okay.
And they would like to address it, but.
Well, I realize we can't talk about the employee, what, what is, what is the issue?
The issue is?
Uh, the star, not the Star Hope, I'm sorry, the sale off is going to be demolished. Um, there's a new provision in our land use ordinance that was just.
A big building on Quinshoe.
Alright.
There's a new provision in our land use ordinance that requires a, a permit for demolition.
Okay. Then I'm assuming there's no permit here?
Part of, part of the permitting is that there's like a thirty day public notice, so if somebody has a better suggestion, I mean, it's a small building, you could drag it onto the adjacent lot and save the landowner some money. And you could buy the, if they don't want the building. I mean, maybe they would sell the property if somebody knew that they didn't want the building.
I mean, all I could do is investigate and uh, call uh, possibly the, the new general manager, Carol Martin. Talk to her and speak with our attorney to see what they suggest we do.
Okay, so.
This is the best, I mean, Ellen and I spoke with Carol Martin, he had to be morning for, I don't know, forty-five minutes, I mean, she approached the town willing to apply for this demolition permit and was said, oh, you don't need it. I condemn the building, so.
Okay, how long ago did that take place?
The conversation we had with Carol, yes.
No, when she got that message from the.
I don't, I don't know, we don't know, um, not on that board, I have no idea.
So you just found out yesterday that?
She told, well, no, there was a notice in the wind that they were gonna.
Well, yeah, but, but about the permit.
And then I wrote to them and said, you know, I wish she would reconsider for various reasons. And then Carol offered to speak with me and Wes.
So, what, your complaint is there is no permit, is that what your complaint is?
My complaint is that we've worked hard on this ordinance and we put this.
I understand that.
That's not.
And the very, and the very purpose of that part of the ordinance was so when a building was going to be demolished, it, it could be considered a little bit more than just tearing it down. I mean.
I mean, if this were just a garage in somebody's yard, you wouldn't care. But this is the sale off, which has been a historic structure in this town since, you know, before nineteen hundred. With many uses, part of the maritime history, part of the artistic history. It's. It's a very important structure.
But it's in tough shape.
Yes, and it can be fixed or it can be rebuilt, but that.
I mean, the Washington School was in tough shape, but it did a nice job restoring it.
The Gassamander was in tough shape and has been restored several times.
You know, we're not talking about whether you think the building should be restored or not, we're acting, we're asking to have the town ordinance enforced.
Right.
So we, you know, that there's thirty days that the public is aware that it's likely gonna be torn down. And, I mean, somebody might come forward and said, I'll pay to fix it, I mean, I, if, if the building was on my property, I would not tear it down. It needs work, for sure, it's a hundred and thirty something years old. If you don't take care of something, it starts to deteriorate.
Well, we can't issue a permit.
No, but you could allow the people that own it to apply for a permit instead of.
And enforcing.
Well.
They've been told by, again, a town employee that they don't need to.
Don't need to apply for the permit?
That's right.
Oh, I see, okay.
Even if it's a condemned property.
But, but the, the, you know, the uh, the Masonic building was condemned. You know, but it's been restored and, you know, it, it's, just because someone decides to condemn it doesn't mean that it has to be torn down.
No, I, I, I don't disagree with that, but.
And we're not, we're not arguing whether the building should be torn down or not, we're asking that our new ordinance just be administered.
So.
And the people were willing to do that.
Okay, hold on a second, Wes. Yeah, it's all, this all just came to my attention like a few minutes before their attention. So, um. What, why does, why don't they come and apply for a permit at the next meeting, at the next planning board or?
Well, they were told by Fay, they didn't.
I know, that's beside the point, though, if they, if they now realize, correct?
Well, no, they, they.
They don't know that that's part of the ordinance?
They have a letter from Fay saying she has.
Dana, thank you, I would appreciate your expertise.
Few points.
Yes.
Um. Fay determined that the building was dangerous and uh.
We don't really know what Fay determined.
Oh, wait a minute, we're not discussing a person, we're not discussing her.
Okay.
The discussion is about the lack of a permit. I don't want that to come into the convers- conversation.
So again, the hypothetical case that you have a dangerous building, um, should there, and, and to comply with solving that dangerous building, demolition is one of the ways to comply. Uh, do you want to make somebody wait, uh, it's thirty, more than thirty days to get a permit? Uh, uh, in the case that they're trying to comply with a town order that their building is dangerous. Normally permits like that would be expedited rather than delays added. So I think it's appropriate to demolish it as quick as possible, assuming it is a dangerous building.
That still doesn't address the, the perimeter, and if it's in the ordinance.
Whether it gets a permit or not is a town decision, um. Whether the um, section of the ordinance that was recently rewritten is applied, which requires uh, delays and uh, planning board approval. Uh, I don't think it should apply in a case like this because of the dangerous building determination. But uh, um, it's kind of neither here nor there to me whether the permit gets issued or not.
Wes.
I mean, I drove by the building this morning and there's one no trespassing sign on it, doesn't say any no danger, keep away, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just stand in there, looks the same as it did three years ago.
Marjorie, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna recommend that Marjorie look into this a little further because we clearly are not sure what. I'm not sure, I don't know about the rest of you, but the rest of the board, I don't. I mean, if it's part of the ordinance, I feel that to already not comply with the new ordinance is not a good idea, because once one person said, well, we don't need a permit because.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think that's the purpose of having ordinances, and already our ordinances are barely recognized. I don't think we need to start out with this new um, amended ordinance and start right off the bat, not observing. That's my opinion.
I agree with you.
Man, unless there's something specifically written into that ordinance that would give an exception for dangerous building, then I totally agree.
Okay, so I don't know if Marjorie can, what she can do, but.
I'll make a couple of calls and see what I can find out.
Yeah.
That's, that's about all I can think of.
And I think we go about it appropriately, we'll have an executive session.
Exactly.
With the personnel, and if we can just hit pause on it all and do that.
Right. Ellen?
So does that mean that Marjorie, you'll, um, get in touch with Carol Martin and let her know that they need to apply for a permit? That's what I understood.
Well, I'm gonna consult with our attorney and.
Yeah.
See what. What, what I should do going forward.
Be helpful, see what letter was written to the Star Hope Foundation, what they were actually told and writing.
Okay, well.
What is the, I'm sorry, I apologize, the date of demolition?
April first, April Fool's Day.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any, anything else? That's about all I think that we can do at this point.
Well, I'm a little bit concerned because if Marjorie has to speak with an attorney and that could take a week or so to get some kind of an opinion, the clock will be running and April first will come around and the building will be torn down. It would be nice if there was some real resolution tonight, just to say to the.
I don't, I don't know what we can do, our hands are tied, we don't know. We can't do anything.
Is there another meeting before April first?
Yeah, twenty-sixth.
I mean, it seems like.
It's a funny time.
Seems, you know, it seems like you could get the information.
Well, Marjorie will look into it tomorrow and see what she can find out. And we'll go from there, I think that's the smartest, or the wisest thing for us to do as a board, we don't wanna jump in and do something that's gonna create more chaos. I mean, we could clearly, we're not the ones that can issue permits, I mean, certainly, I suppose we could if we. We can enforce.
I don't know how it all works, so.
I, I think that the course of action has been decided, I think Marjorie can check in, check in with legal and making sure we know what we're supposed to be doing, or we could, what we should do in this situation. Let's move on and go, go from there.
Right.
That's, that's all we can do.
Okay, so that's, sorry.
That's fine, we'll see you at the next meeting, hopefully we can find some resolution, it makes everything happy.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody all set?
I guess.
All ready, moving on. Committee and departmental reports and appointments, A, Woodard and Kern.
Um, there's a couple of things on here that um that I wanted to talk about and maybe Gabe will jump in, uh, there's a couple of grants that we want to apply for. One is the um, main coastal program, and we'd like to apply for a uh, hydrologic and structural analysis of the old crib work. Um, so we're hoping to get support just to submit a letter of intent. All we're doing now is sending a letter of intent that we are going to apply, and that has to be in by the end of March. Um, I gave a couple of suggested motions on my memo. And the second one is the so-called Clean Water State Revolving Fund Grant. Um, we typically do apply for this money every year, it's very competitive, um, and many times we don't get it, but we'd like, we'd just like your support for submitting the grant application. And it will be for improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and collection system and possibly extending the system. But at this point, um, all we're looking for is support for the, those two applications. Anything to add to that, uh, Gabe?
No, um, no, I think that's good, thank you.
Is this part of the proposal to extend the sewer down the sand road or is it separate?
That is part of the current project.
But this is a separate grant for additional money for additional wear?
To make um, um, improve to our system, to our treatment plant, we need upgrades uh, to our pump stations, uh, things like that. And, and possibly to extend to those areas that uh, were taken out of the original parts project, like up, um, what is it called, Cross Street up and back of Pleasant, Pleasant Street and Carver Street. That backside, that was taken out of the project, so for instance, that could be something that would be added back in. It just, you know, it's um, something that we apply for. There, there seems to be a lot of grant money out there, we certainly want to get in, you know, and apply for these things and see if we can get it, you know, I don't know if we can or not, but I don't know.
Is this, oh, I'm sorry, Gabe, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I just wanted to add, um, so, so NPM knows this for the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. These um, revolving loan funds, it's like, they have, um, you know, an annual application and, and you, if you want to be eligible to apply for like any type of federal funding, like the, the earmark that we got to pay for the sewer and stormwater pieces um, of the downtown project, which is that phase three funding that comes through EPA, like, we're only eligible for those types of things if we got in the queue, which means we have, you have to be in this queue, so you have to apply to the state revolving loan funds in order for them to acknowledge um, your eligibility for other grants. The revolving loan fund has like this scoring matrix and we always, the sewer always scores, scores low and we never really get, there, there's never really any um, funding available for Vinalhaven. But just getting in that queue and being on the list makes you eligible to apply for other things. So it's really not like we're gonna apply for this grant, it's basically saying if we don't apply, then we're ineligible for anything else. So it's really just kind of like a placeholder, if something comes up, we are then eligible to apply for things.
Okay, sounds good.
And this, this um, i- is this like the drinking water that?
It is.
Decided, it's decided in the fall?
Yeah, it's, right, exactly, and, and it's this, it's the, like, the sister program for sewer, um, to the drinking water, yeah, yep, exactly.
Okay, good, alright, so, um. I would move to support the submission of an application for grants on, and or loans from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and collection system?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
There's another one.
One about it. Um, thank you, Les.
You're welcome.
Um, move to support the submission of a letter of intent to apply for a uh, FY twenty-five coastal community grant, shore and harbor planning grant for a hydrologic and structural analysis of the old crib work, wave break at the ferry terminal.
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Uh, B, downtown project.
Do you want me to start, Marjorie?
Sure.
Okay, um, so I feel like we have more and more good news, which I like since we've, we've been, or in a holding pattern for a long time. Um, we did receive that Main Infrastructure Adaptation Fund Grant for an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand to increase the scope of the parking, the downtown parking lot rebuild to include a new retaining wall that goes like uh, kind of between the parking lot and where Dot and Millie's is, so like behind the old fire hall. Millie and her team did a great job, just like doing some um, repairs there to ho- hold off the existing erosion, but this would actually give us the additional funds needed to, to put in a retaining wall there, so glad to say we, we did get that funding. Um, let's see, we had the first pre-bid meeting for the phase one of the project on the twenty-eighth. Um, there were several bidders in attendance, which is good news. Um, Woodard and Kern is really trying to do um, some follow-up with the interested parties, um, and, you know, make sure hopefully that we get more than one bidder for the project. And um, I think they're, they're just trying to make sure questions are answered and um, the bid opening, I think it's coming right up on the, um, I want to say it's on the twentieth, um.
It's um, yeah, the twentieth.
Yeah, so that's next, next week already, so um, we'll have, hopefully we'll have more news, um, and um, you know, we'll be, we'll be doing a, um, you know, follow-up email with the, with the folks, Water District folks and um, Millie and, and other folks that have been on the calls uh, regularly, uh, in terms of our partners and town staff. Um, just to, just to make sure people are aware of that happening. Um, Brent came out on Friday for a site visit, um, we were able to, you know, talk through a lot of things. One um, change that uh, we discussed, um, and it was brought up uh, by the Fisherman's Co-op, that, an outfall that was positioned to go kind of behind, like, the Greets Eats where, where Greta has her food truck. Um, the co-op was concerned that freshwater outfall was gonna go directly into um, the area where the lobster holding pen is. So um, we worked with Woodard and Kern to see it, what the options were for making that outfall go out of the face of the fish plant wharf, it's not really ideal, but we met with Jim and talked about it. Um, and then we met with the co-op and discussed the change, and then Marjorie, Millie, and Brent and I discussed the change. And it looks like, you know, it's a, it's a fee, you know, a feasible option. It, it does satisfy what the co-op's concern was, and it seems like, you know, we agreed it was the right thing to do, it's not really gonna impact the project all that much, um. So I just wanted to put that out there in case folks have any questions about that, but that would be an amendment that would go into the bidding documents, um, so I'll, I'll just see if anyone has any questions or concerns about that.
No questions, well.
Okay. Okay, very good. Um, we also um, discussed, um, you know, more about the parking lot design, we also talked about, you know, the concerns we have heard um, from the community members or stakeholders regarding the, the proposed size of the crosswalk, which I know we've discussed before, we came back to uh, the decision that you all had made that we would um, be discussing the location of the eagle and the size of the crosswalk as part of the parking lot design process. Which I am happy to say, um, we heard from Northern Border Regional Commission, um, today in fact, that we have completed all of the requirements to get the final notice to proceed. So there'll be one more document they send us, which is the actual final notice to proceed document, and once Marjorie signs that um, and we return it, then we can begin that design process for the parking lots and the boat launches, so all good news there, um, that could happen any minute. Um, let's see, we will have our next uh, public meeting for the downtown project, eight thirty AM on, I believe it is March twenty-seven? Is when that, yep, March twenty-seventh, that is, oh, sorry, is it on the? Sorry.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. March twenty-seventh at eight thirty AM in the morning, and I'll just put this out there, since this is on Facebook, if anyone is interested in coming to that, just go on the town website calendar, you'll see it listed there, click there, you can join via Zoom. Or just let us know if you want to join from the town office, because Marjorie is there and usually, you know, one or two people join with her from the town office, so if you're interested in learning more about the downtown project, I'm saying this for all of Vinalhaven, um, please, you know, feel free to join in that um, monthly uh, public slash stakeholders meeting. Um, let's see, what else did I have? Um. Let's see, oh, yeah, um, one, one thing that uh, I feel like was really enjoyable as well as insightful, um, Millie, Pam, Marjorie, Brent and I went to the school on Friday and we met with the middle, oh, well, most of the middle school, the seventh graders weren't there, but we met with the middle and high schoolers um, to talk about the project, we did like a quick overview of the project and then um, just had discussion with the kids and um, talked about a lot of things, they gave us, uh, we solicited input uh, for the parking lot um, design, um, we talked about, um, you know, just, just all sorts of things related to the project, um, Pam had brought a um, or asked us to bring us cross-section of the old water main, so they could see what the old water main looks like. Um, but it was great, I don't know if any Pam or Marjorie have anything to add, but we got some really good uh, insightful, clever, creative uh, comments and questions.
I thought it was great, I thought the kids were mu- much more interested than I anticipated they would be.
Right, I was very impressed with their questions.
Yeah, they were cute.
Yeah, it was, it, I, I wasn't expecting that many questions, and it was basically from the time we started, people were asking questions, so.
I know.
And, and then the middle schoolers ended up staying like till. And then, and, and then the middle schoolers ended up staying like till one, and then we had a request to stay longer and talk to the skippers again. So it was, it was longer than we had anticipated, but it was, I felt it was really good and it was fun. I mean, it was, I enjoyed, I enjoyed it very much. We learned that there should be a Starbucks, a Dunkin' Donuts and a Target on vinyl.
Did they decide where to put the eagle?
Um, it was interesting. They had some great comments, which I, I will add to the ongoing, um, collection of comments that we've been receiving. But they, they, it seemed like the consensus was to keep it in the parking lot. Um, they talked, like, they're, they did talk a little bit about, like, where it currently is might be. Problematic because of sightlines and visual, you know, pedestrian safety, but they felt like it was such a. Feature of downtown and it's all, like, it's always been there. We know it to be there. Um, so they, they really felt like they didn't want it to. Leave the parking lot. So that, that seemed to be the consensus.
Yeah, they thought it should have picnic tables or seats or something, like at the back of the parking lot and I think, I thought that was kind of a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, they had some good.
So, Ma- Marjorie, do you want me to just mention this letter or about the crosswalk?
Yeah, okay, we just, we got another letter, um, about. The concern that people have, they think that the, um. Design of the crosswalk is gonna take away parking. And I guess, you know, again, we want to, um, just. Make sure that people understand that we haven't really designed the parking lot and we're not taking away any parking and there still will be handicapped. Parking. So I guess, you know, we wanted to just reiterate that.
Yeah, it seems that people, when they're looking at the plans, they. I don't know if they don't, if they don't see this part. I don't, I don't know. I've, I haven't looked at it for a while, but clearly. There are not gonna be, the handicap spaces aren't gonna be removed from, in front of the grocery store and. You know, those stuff, but. What's up?
I, I mean, a handicap spot, can of paint, you can, you can create a handicap spot, like, that's a pretty fluid thing.
And it hasn't, we, I mean, it's not completely decided that the crosswalk is gonna be.
The design's still in flux.
That's right.
Right, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
So we just want, oh, go ahead.
No, just, yeah, I mean, concurring with Marjorie, like, the project doesn't take away parking, the whole goal, the project is to add parking. We haven't designed the parking yet, the parking lot yet, but we talked about when that does happen, you know, to have at least three. Accessible slash handicap spots there, perhaps one that would accommodate a larger, like a van as opposed to just. Um, like a larger van as opposed to just, um, smaller vans. Um, and then we did talk about, even though it's not on the plans. Where the handicap parking is, um, it's not on the plans because it's really up to the town where to put those. So, but, you know, logically, one would go in front of the grocery store and one would go in front of the, um. Uh, post office like we have now. So it's just shit, it shifts slightly where they will go, uh, just based on the crosswalk and. Exit of, um, that fire lane there, but, um, yeah, I mean, they're, they're not disappearing.
Okay. All right, hopefully everybody will hear that, hear this and know that. Nothing's engraved in stone at this point. Anything else, Gabe? Were we all set?
Uh, yeah, I just had one thing, um, that I just am gonna toss out there, but I'll bring back, um. Probably on the twenty-sixth or the, the meeting on the second, um, which is. Um, I know it's, it seems, um. I won't say it seems crazy, but like we talk, we talk about the downtown project as like, you know, this is the twenty to thirty-year project for. Downtown and then the, there's a lot of questions out there, sort of like, you know, what happens later on? Like, is this really gonna, like, solve sea level rise? And, um, we know that, that, that it's not, like, it's not a solution to. Cause we're not like elev- asking everyone to elevate their building, you know, that there's, there's not, there's not components of the project there. So. We have talked about, and I'm not sure if we talked about this as a board, but certainly it's been out there, um, in terms of. You know, planning conversations is sort of like the next step is to really understand all of the different. Future options that are available. Like, I know there's proponents out there for, like, building a seawall. So that would be like, consider how you armor your, your, um, your coast. There's options for, like, how do you raise your buildings? Um, and then there's options that people look at as like, how do we relocate buildings? So I just wanted to put out there that there's an opportunity probably coming to be part of a. A planning grant, and these are sort of like those long-term planning grants, right, where you start talking about something, you use existing information. And you're kind of building toward something that may or may not happen well into the future, but it lays the groundwork for. Those, like, conversations and information that you need to make future decisions. But there's a grant that comes out, um. I think in the fall, but there's a letter of interest that will be due, I think, the second week of April. So I'll bring more information about that to either the next meeting or the April second meeting, and if it seems like we want to be part of that. Um, then we would, I, I think, just ask for a motion to be involved in that. But Marjorie and I can review that in advance. And see if it seems like a good option for the town, but it might be a way to have those types of conversations, um, at. Probably little or no cost to the town in terms of outlay of money.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to C Public Works. What is that?
I don't, Millie's not here. I don't have any.
Okay. Um, uh, if it's all right with the board, I'm gonna move. Uh, nine D, nine A Knox County Deputy Contract and Housing Allowance. I'm gonna move that up to.
I thought that was next.
No, it's. Yeah, I'm gonna, I think we should let them.
Oh.
Wow, yeah, I think, oh, and we should let this discussion take place first. Okay, is that all right with everybody?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, whoever wants to start, let everybody hear.
Uh, Kurt asked to attend the meeting to talk about, um. The housing situation for, um, the current deputy that we have here. And, uh, he's also present here at the meeting, um, and the, we have, uh, some new applicants. That would require housing, so, um. Kurt, do you?
I don't, I don't even see him.
Yeah, I'm here, if you can hear me.
Yeah, hi.
Okay, I'd just like to start, uh. Wish we could have come out in person, but I'm not a big fan of Zoom meetings. I like in person if we, all possible, but. Just wanted to give you a brief update and I will say this is a, a good position to be in. A, a good, uh, problem to have, if you will, of, uh, we do have a second Vinyl Haven Deputy. Applicant who has been vetted and has twenty-three years of experience. He's a fully certified officer. Uh, he's a supervisor at an agency here in Maine. And basically what we're looking to do is just have a brief discussion about the housing piece. Uh, we do have the contract to come up for renewal. Uh, we're trying to set a meeting up for this Friday to. Uh, discuss the contract. I don't anticipate having any major changes in the contract. Uh, it already addresses, uh, the housing piece and it talks about the, uh. Allowance for the housing. Uh, there could be some minor changes in the contract that we may want to talk about, but I guess for tonight. Uh, I wanted to discuss maybe a short-term solution for housing for the second deputy. Uh, me, because we are coming into the busy season of the summer and it would be nice to have. The second deputy on board to get acclimated and get used to the town, uh, meet the people. Um, I really think having the second deputy on Vinyl Haven will make a world of difference. Uh, it really will change the dynamic. Of how, uh, law enforcement is done. Uh, you'll have, uh, better coverage. Uh, you'll have, uh, if one deputy wants to take, maybe take a day off, uh, that will be more helpful. Uh, maybe someone needs to come to the mainland for a day or two. Uh, it will provide you with that coverage. It's, it's good for officer safety. It's good for officer wellness. Uh, it re- re- reduce, uh, potential. Burnout from having one person there. Uh, so it's gonna make a wo- a world of difference and. As far as I can tell, we've never had a second deputy, so, uh, it's, uh, very, uh, very exciting to, to be close to having that. Uh, with that being said, I just wanted to just have a discussion about, uh, what we could do to find a short-term. Solution to, to finding maybe a, a situation that we, the county and the town agrees with. Just to get us by for a few months, six months, maybe, if you will, uh, to get the new deputy out there and. Um, meet the townspeople and whatnot. So I know there's long-term solutions that we've talked about. Uh, there's, I, I know there's, uh, talk about maybe the town purchasing properties. Uh, I know, uh, there's been talk about having a duplex, uh, to have various providers. Uh, whether it be doctors, uh, paramedics, uh, anybody that may come to the island. Uh, temporary housing, if you will, but all that's probably, as you know, probably nine months to a year away of, of that being reality. So. I guess I'm trying to narrow us in to focus on wh- what a, what a short-term, you know, solution would look like and. So I guess I'd just kind of open it up with that and if anybody had any, any thoughts or if they had questions about. Uh, operation, operationally, what a second deputy would look like and so.
Well, I guess.
Yes, Don.
I think that, uh, you know. We should really probably jump right into the meat of the matter. You know, we really, if we want better. Law enforcement, better service, we, we need the second deputy. We also need housing and without housing, you aren't gonna get, you aren't gonna get someone. I don't think. Is that probably in line with where you are?
That's correct. Uh, anybody that we've ever had consider coming to Vinyl Haven. If the housing piece wasn't there, we're not gonna get the applicants and. We were lucky to find this applicant. Uh, i- it's difficult to find the person that's the right fit for the island as well. We don't want to just send. Anybody to the island, someone, uh, they have to be the right fit. So, uh, we feel we fought, found that person. And we really want to, we could get into a little bit deeper discussion about the person's background, but. That's for maybe executive session or if the, the, the selectmen decide to do that, we can possibly talk about. More details about that, but.
Right up front, though, he was a very impressive person in my estimation.
Okay.
So I guess we're just trying to find out what options might be out there as far as a temporary solution. To try to get him in place before the busy season. Uh, it would be good to. Get him out there, like I said, meet the community. He's already met several people in the community from our visit on Friday, so.
Well, as always, that's a, the trick is to find the housing. I mean, we've, we've been having little articles in the wind for weeks and. I put a little something extra in there in the wind that will come out. Till tomorrow. You know, I just. We're really coming up empty in terms of finding any additional housing.
There's certainly a, a couple of options that may be coming up. And one would be a house, uh, but I don't want to discuss it during, detailed during the meeting right now. But I think there are a couple of options out there. Kurt, did you get the, uh, uh. Email I sent to you this afternoon?
I did, I looked at it briefly, yes. We would have to come out and take a look at it and whatnot, but, so.
I can probably set that up for Friday, I think, but I don't know for sure until I ask.
Right, I know, and I know we've had discussions in the past about.
Oh.
What, what a long-term housing would look like, you know, more permanent, a more permanent solution. Uh, I, I can see that being nine months to a year away, so I guess. I'm trying to find, you know, a temporary solution at this point.
Pat, you have a question? Pat Polkey, sorry.
Oh, just more of a statement. Uh, so Pat Polkey, I'm the sheriff. Uh, thank you all for allowing us to attend. I know I haven't been involved in a lot of these meetings, but. You know, how we operate as chief deputy, uh, di- generally deals with a lot of the operational matters, um, especially this time of year with legislative session. I spend a lot of time, uh, working with legislators and senators on, uh, bills and such, but this matter in particular. Um, I just wanted to be here tonight and specifically just to kind of give some, some onus to, you know, having been a vi- a North Haven deputy for a year myself. Uh, I appreciate the situation. Uh, you know, housing has been a challenge in the island specifically, but we're finding it's a challenge across Knox County in general. Um, you know, this applicant in particular, we have some time. Um, the chief is just looking to get with you folks to work on that. You know, this individual does have a job currently. Um, they're not looking to abandon that job necessarily. Uh, but this was an opportunity for them. I know he has, he has a passion for this profession. Um, you know, his life is bringing him this way, so we have some opportunity to work with this. Um, and I just wanted you folks to, to, uh, be aware that we feel that a second deputy is the best option. You know, we've tried rotations. Uh, that is a different flavor, as you know. Um, an individual deputy, we also know there's been some challenges with that because that person really never gets a day off sometimes. Um, so just, I think this really is the best option for all of us, um, and whatever we can do to help partner with you to make that. The best we can make it is, I really want to, want to push and, and explain to you folks, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any?
I think, I sent a message to, uh, Marjorie the other day. I know that there are some other places coming on the market in the not too dear future. I think some might be very attractive because it is that. One of them is a three-bedroom house, two baths, which would be ideal for a family coming in like Peter or whoever. I'd like to propose that we go ahead and call a special town meeting and ask for approval. To dedicate up to five hundred thousand dollars for purchase of a house for the deputies and for the town use. And I think the sooner we do that, the better, and if we can get it done, the short-term solution may not be so short.
Five hundred thousand, wow.
And my biggest concern is, okay, so we buy a piece of real estate. Where's the money gonna come from for everything else that goes along with this piece of real estate? Upkeep, maintenance, insurances. The whole nine yards that comes with being a homeowner and it's a, it's gonna be a town property. And I just think it's gonna be a big financial ask. Ben?
Um, you have an allotment for sheriff. In the budget already for housing. That's gonna pay for something. I'm not sure what, how much the allotment is. It would, it might be paying for the mortgage, but it also may pay for insurance too, depending on how the dollars work out.
How does, Marjorie, how does our. Insurance work on our town-owned properties now? It's the blanket policy for all of them, individual kind of impact?
We have one policy and each, um, structure is listed in our policy.
Yeah, so it's, it's a blanket policy that covers all town properties. So we rolled it into that same.
But any town facility we have requires maintenance. I don't care if it's a town garage or the. All that stuff.
I see that. I just, I just don't want to jump in with both feet. And then a year down the road, have this giant expense that.
Well, clearly it's something that would have to go to a town vote, so.
Right.
You know, that would.
But I think that if we don't do it, we're gonna be back to where we've been. I just don't see another option. If there are rental properties here, that'd be fantastic, but they're, uh, people who have rentals really do not want to. People who have rentals really do not wanna rent anywhere they don't know because they've had much damage in the past. So I just don't see renting in the future of the one we have right now happening. So I just think we have to bite the bullet, we really want police protection. We don't.
Well, I think, in all honesty. There's no reason not to let the town decide.
Has to be the town.
Yeah, that's, the town is, we're not gonna make that decision here.
I, I, I realize that.
I think, in all honesty. Well publicized, special town meeting. Makes perfect sense and it'll show a commitment towards law enforcement or not.
I do think that we need to have. Some realistic numbers, I mean, we can set aside. We can, we can ask to set aside a half million dollars. But we also need to realize that it's going to be. More than that, just because it's a property.
Well, I think the five hundred thousand would be a loan. And then in the operating budget, you'd have to plan for the maintenance of. The building.
Just like we do on any.
Right.
Right, so the article for any special town meeting would authorize. I, well, I think it would be to authorize borrowing up to. That amount and then to take. Maybe a first payment out of fund balance as a, for instance. It would be that kind of article, so. I guess what you would need to do is make a motion to have me draft. A special town meeting warrant. And then I would have to bring that back to the board for final signatures. And you would have to pick a date that you anticipate doing that.
So.
Hmm, I think Andrea. Yeah, I was, I'm sorry. Uh, Andrea?
Do you mind if I ask you a question?
No, no, I'm sorry, I was listening to Marjorie, I wasn't, didn't see your hand.
I have a very nuts and bolts question, it's a two part question, so I, I agree with Don that, that. Without rentals, you can give somebody as much stipend as possible and they have nowhere to spend it. So it, it may be that buying something is a solution, however, from a very nuts and bolts perspective. How exactly, well, how exactly does that work? You know, you've got two deputies. So one gets the house, does he get less pay, the other one, like, how, how does that work? What does that look like?
Well, currently, we don't really have a contract with. Between the Vinyl Haven and the Knox County Sheriff's Office. The last contract that we had had a provision for. A thousand dollars a month or a cap of twelve thousand dollars per year and then five thousand dollars for. Uh, heat, fuel and electricity. Now, as Kurt said, we have to go back and negotiate a new contract and part of that discussion was. How do we want to adjust this, these paragraphs about housing? To Kurt's point. He feels like the town should subsidize a hundred percent for housing, in other words. Whatever. Rental we found, we would cover that payment, but as it stands right now. As you say, the nuts and bolts of it is that we have the apartment. So there's a paragraph about maintaining the separate housing for a deputy. And in the past, that was always for. You know, we had deputies that would come and go, so that apartment was convenient. Because we'd have different deputies. Throughout the year. So we still have that apartment, Deputy Allen is in that apartment. The thought, the thought is that if we could find something larger for a family with more children, we would shift. Him to the larger home and then keep the apartment for someone that didn't need. You know, a larger space, but. Again, it's all. There's nothing written in stone, so I don't, we, Vinyl Haven doesn't really even have a current contract. With the sheriff's office, it expired at the end of December, but that's what the previous contract had provision. And we did put money in the budget to allow for having two deputies because that's what the townspeople. Discussed and wanted the selectmen to do for the last, I think, three years. We've tried to budget for two deputies and two. Two. Apartments or how, you know, whatever, two rental units. So there's money in the budget, but working, you know, we still have to work out those details, but there may be some. For instance, there might be some amendments in the new contract. I, I don't know what those will be.
I could, I don't anticipate any. Major changes in the contract language, maybe with some of the. The figures we're using for housing or I don't anticipate there needs to be any changes on the county's end, but. With that being said, again, my original point was. I mean, even if the town, let's say the town agreed to purchase a property, you're still looking at. You know, six to nine months out. So it still leaves us trying to find a. Short term solution, if you will, so. I mean, if the town decided to buy a property. You could not only use it for a deputy, but it could be used for. Any provider that comes to the island, whether it be a doctor, a paramedic, a, a school teacher. I mean, there's, there's a lot of potential. To use that property as you see fit as a town.
Well, that, that led to my second question, do you mind?
No, but that's true, it wouldn't necessarily just be.
Right, but you're also creating a precedent and a slippery slope. So are you gonna throw up some guide rails on that because? As far as essential services go. You're gonna provide a house for a deputy, does that stop then? Like, does that extend to EMS? Does it extend to fire? You're setting a precedent. You know, you're gonna buy a house for every one of them?
I don't know that that precedent would. Be manned that, I don't know.
I think we can deal with it, but I'm not quite sure of all the implications of the.
What do you think, Marjorie?
There's always that, you know.
Right.
We'll deal with it.
You could have, have the attorneys review it and see what language may or may not need to be. Put into this, obviously, an attorney would review it and see if there's any legal ramifications for it.
Yeah.
What our attorney says.
Excuse me, Don, excuse me.
What our attorney says is that by providing housing, we're opening up. I can't remember the, how they, they put it, but. These, these Knox County deputies could be considered joint employees. Joint from the town and the county because the town is providing housing for them, so that's the. One of the red flags that an attorney pointed out. That's just something to consider.
Is that just a language thing? I mean, can, can we purchase a house and then rent it out and it's just a, a town owned? Property that gets rented out and it's not. Per se in the language for. The, the, the car, you know.
It's a good question.
That is a good question because. If they were paying the rent. On it, on, paying, you know, any other rental. So to me, that would make sense, that if they're paying rent, whether it's a town owned property or your property, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, the, the big sticky wicket for that is that we'd, we'd still be provided, we're contracted to provide a stipend, which is paying the rent. Right? Which, which we have now, right?
Well, we have no contract right now.
Well, we had.
Some of these issues could be discussed, go ahead.
I was just saying that there could be stipulations if that was the case.
Well, I think it's something that would, we're gonna have to discuss and find out what our legal obligations might be before we. Continue, what do you think, Marjorie? Do you agree that? It's a good idea?
Well, you can, you know, you can talk about liability all day long. I mean, you know, and these are things that attorneys bring up because they think about the worst case scenario, in other words, if a deputy did something wrong. The town could be held liable for the deputy's actions because they're really what the attorney is calling a joint employee. You know, whether or not that would happen, I don't know, I think it's kind of a long shot, but. I mean, we've had this same contract with similar language for the last, what, thirty years? So, and nothing's ever happened.
What, what happens in other towns? Kurt, that. That deputies, do they own their own homes or how does it all work in other small communities?
On the mainland?
Yes.
Well, they, they, they own their own home, so basically the. The major, major draw for someone to come to the island is. The, you know, some of the, the benefits, as you know, it's extremely difficult to. Find law enforcement on the mainland and it, it makes it a unique challenge to find someone to be on an island. And to my previous point, we don't wanna just send anyone out there, they have to be the right fit and. If you decide to have a, you know, executive session later on, we could. Discuss some personnel issues, you know, talk more about the person, maybe talk a little bit more about contractual things. So if, if that's something that the board decides they wanna do tonight, we could always stay for that.
Sheriff, I see you have your hand up. Sheriff Polkey?
Yes, thank you, yeah, so as Marjorie mentioned, the language for the most part has been the same for many years. We did in, I think about five years ago, maybe six, when Eddie Door was there. We did adjust some things to try to allow some opportunities. For individuals to try to find their own rental and that was where the stipend part came from. Exactly to your point with all these issues around the potential of liability because, you know. You know, the county, just like a town, doesn't wanna be a landlord. There are a lot of issues that come around being a landlord and, and I fully appreciate that discussion and, and what you may have thoughts around that for, because. You know, especially, you know, you, you can't assume that somebody's gonna be a good actor, you have to assume the worst. And even though they're the deputy, you still have to assume that if, once they get in there, you have to go through the eviction process and other things. As a property owner, so as, you know, any attorney would say, you gotta look at the worst case scenario, so I appreciate that part of the conversation. That is why we had the stipend put in there was to try to encourage individuals to look at the market, find their own place. And allow us an opportunity to provide them some compensation to pay for it on their own. Unfortunately, like you all know, it's just been very challenging for many years in the island specifically, but now we're seeing that even on the mainland. It's very challenging even to find mainland deputies housing, I mean, I've had to allow more opportunities for those individuals to live outside of the county. Than I ever have as a sheriff, so just food for thought, so.
It's good, thank you. All right, well, I'd say we have a lot more to discuss here.
It's worth having an executive session just to follow up here and that was.
Well, we have, we have, already have a, um, executive session. On the agenda.
Is it gonna be a long one? It shouldn't be, okay.
What shouldn't be this?
Executive session?
No, I mean, the one that's on here now, you mean? I have no idea.
We were gonna talk about wages, remember?
Yes.
As part of the budget, and then I said, if you're gonna talk, I said, if you're gonna talk about. So if you're gonna talk about. The second deputy position, my suggestion was that you. To discuss a personnel matter, but also that it's about Vinyl Haven employee wages. And to discuss a potential new hire for deputy. I mean, even, even in the executive session motion, you should say. You know, to, to, as much as you can about what you're gonna be discussing.
Okay, so if they wanna stay for that discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that will be in the executive session then. So we'll blow through this other stuff?
Yeah, we'll go right through it.
Sure we will. Okay, so if, you guys can hang on for a little bit? Okay, good, we'll set, all right. All right, let's keep moving along and go back to old business and revisit vinyl cove analysis report.
We found, oh, I don't have the right agenda.
That was my fault.
Well, one of the dis- discussions that Gabe and Brett and I also had was. We wanted to go back and revisit the, the North Haven Road flooding. People ask me about that occasionally. So there are, there is some, and maybe is Gabe still on? There is some resilience project funding available, or maybe that's not the right term. But to that point, the suggestion that Gabe made was that we. Develop a reserve fund in this new budget. And call it, you know, resilience project matching funds because frankly, there's a lot of money out there. And a lot of money that's going to become available and we wanna be able to act on. Applying for this money and to do that, as you know, many times you need matching funds, so. It was a suggestion that came up at, at one of our meetings. Concerning the, the vinyl cove analysis that we've already done. I don't know if you wanna jump in on that, Gabe?
I think that says it, I mean.
Okay.
It, it essentially like would, like, because you could say, oh, road reserve money could be matching money for a vinyl cove. Roadway project, but then you take that money away from like something that couldn't be grant funded. Like a paving project, just a general paving project, so a lot of communities are starting a resilience fund. So any type of project that could be funded through resilience funding options, I mean, it could be anything. That there's automatically some matching funds there that you're not pulling from other reserve funds. So that's essentially the premise.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I would suggest we put this off. We've had some internal discussions about. Fixing it. By working with the. Range Hall COVID. I'd like to see us go ahead and make the application for a permit to fix it for under fifty. Maybe well under a hundred thousand before we start on any of this other stuff where it could be a couple of million, so.
Well, all we're suggesting at this point is just to get some matching funds.
Right.
For potential projects and to. To your point. You wanted to move forward with some permitting, but I needed, you know. Even to, to start discussions, I needed to have some mapping and some location. About what you're actually going to do that I can send to DEP and various other. Permitting agencies, I have yet, I don't have any information about what you're going to.
Millie hasn't got, anything to you yet on that?
No.
Okay, let me go talk to her again, because I thought.
I don't have anything.
The other day, I thought she was gonna spell that out.
I don't have anything.
Let's follow up on that then.
I, I'm here, I actually, I sent it to you the other day for you to look at, see if that's. What you were thinking and, and then we could send it out to Marjorie and the board.
Okay, so I haven't, I didn't see it, so.
It, it's in your, it should be in your email, the Town of Vinyl Haven email.
I'm sorry that you, something but it never came through, at least I couldn't, I couldn't retrieve it.
Okay.
Let's go back, we, we can do this offline.
Yeah, you guys can figure that out and then bring it to the.
Yeah, we will.
Okay, bring it to Marjorie, so she knows what you're talking about.
Marjorie and Gabe, what kind of? Money are you talking about putting into the resilience fund? Or do you know, how much are you talking about funding?
It's something that we'll discuss, I mean, I mean, the, the select board and myself, you know.
You must have thought of something if you're bringing it forward.
I don't right at this moment, no.
Yeah, I mean, I think it really just depends on what, yeah, I mean, it seems like other reserve fund contributions are what, like. Could you be like fifty, seventy-five, I mean, annually, I don't know what goes into road sidewalk. You know, all of those other reserve funds, but. You know, when we're talking, I mean, like, say there's. Like say there's a, you know, a large scale infrastructure project, usually the match is like it, like. Any, it could be anywhere from twenty to like fifty percent. So, you know, on a million dollar project, you'd be talking a million dollars at the fifty percent mark. So. You, you gotta obviously build it up, well, you know, over a number of years. But, um, you know, not having anything at all then leaves you either out, out of. You know, you, you, you don't have any options or you're pulling it from something else where there isn't available grant money.
You're just asking for, this, this isn't specific to the vinyl code thing. It's just making a reserve fund.
It's really part of our future budget discussions. It's, it was a suggestion to try to move forward. Uh, with addressing the flooding on the North Haven Road. I mean, we're always brainstorming and discussing, uh, projects and potential projects. And the availability of grant funds that may be out there.
Right.
And the point is, there may be some money available for a project like that. And we want to be ready, so we, the thought was to develop a reserve fund. That would be a little bit flexible. It wouldn't be one for one specific project, but it would be flexible that we could use for, um.
Right, and this resiliency term is more, it's, it's a, the new term to.
Any type of project that you can frame that way, like the wave, the crib wave, um. What's it called? The actuator, whatever, the crib work that need desperately like needs to be replaced. At the ferry, you know, that, that piece of town infrastructure, like that, that is a resilience project if we are including. Like sea level rise changes to that, you know, so it's, it could be any. Type of project where there's some level of adaptation incorporated into it to respond to a. Um, you know, climate change challenge.
That's, the paving could not be part of this.
General paving, but if you were like, you know, I, I, I mean, paving as part of a resilience project. Yes, but not like we need to pave ten miles of road. That's not a resilience project.
Well, it kind of is around.
But yeah, I think, I think it's something we really need to think about doing, get, getting some money in the reserve, because that's only gonna get worse.
Do we need to create a motion to create a reserve, or is that something?
We'll talk about it during budget.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay, well, ready then. But Gabe, you know, to be looking, always looking for grant money. Okay.
I'm always looking.
I know, you're right on it. Yeah, okay, let's move on to, uh, back to nine new business. Um, B, transfer station, possible account write offs.
Oh, I, I just, I've got a couple of old accounts. Um, that really should be, well, I don't, I don't have any alternative. The Tanya Robishaw and Larry Oaks. We've been billing them for, what, these go back to twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. We don't have a, um. You know, proper information to try to collect those.
How much of, are they?
Larry Oaks is a hundred and eighty dollars, Tanya Robishaw, a hundred and forty-eight.
I make a motion that we approve the bills to be written off for the Town of Vinyl Haven Transfer Station.
So moved.
C, parking ordinance. Oh, historical society, wait a minute, that was.
Okay, no, let's do, sorry.
I've got people on both sides. Parking ordinance. We're gonna move it to D.
Are we move historical society to D?
Yeah, that, um, yes, let's continue on, please, parking ordinance. I'm not, what are we doing with the parking ordinance?
Yeah, um, I just, I wanted to review it. There's some places that I believe need updates, and there is one spelling error there. Um, I believe I highlighted your copies.
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, um, one, one part is, uh, I believe, um, was putting. Um, the town manager on them. And it should probably be the road commissioner. And then the other one is, um, overnight parking, um, in the parking lot. Is prohibited by. I, I can't remember how it went, but, uh, anyway, there's, there's a spelling error on that one that's also highlighted. It should be unau- it should be unoccupied, not occupied.
That's so because we didn't want people sleeping in their cars, or what was that about?
Well, we're not supposed to have any, um, anybody parking, I mean, I think, I don't think it was supposed to be. Unoccup- I mean, occupied, but I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't think it's supposed to be overnight parking in the parking lot at all.
I think, I'm sorry, I'm, I know I'm butting in here, but I actually think it is occupied. Because I think the intent was that people wouldn't camp in their campers there.
Right.
I think that was the initial intent that people couldn't park there overnight, but you just couldn't sleep in your vehicle overnight. I, I'm pretty sure.
If someone gets drunk at the bar, we, we want them to leave their car there.
We'll call Peter. All right, let's go back to section two, please. All right, so Millie, you have the town manager or in his or her absence. You want to change the road crew foreman to be a road commissioner? Is that what you want to? You'd suggest a public works director? How do you want to?
I, I would consider it to be the road commissioner because if, if I were to go. Would the next person end up being both? Who knows? So I think, you know, don't worry, Pam, don't look at me like that. Um, it, I think it should read road commissioner.
Okay, what's, uh, you guys like the sound of that? All right, road commissioner. And, I think that's. The, um, other one shall stay as occupied on section seven. That will stay as an.
So we, we will allow people to park overnight, just not sleep.
Right.
No camping. Well, we know there's no camping, but, all right, so we'll leave that one as is.
What has to be done to change the wording on ordinance? What's the procedure?
Excuse me, uh, parking ordinance is just a selectmen.
Well, we just changed it.
It's not a, uh, it's one of the things, uh, that. You know, one ordinance that is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen should change. Uh, if you desire.
Okay.
Are, are we going to be issuing the, um, sheriff's department parking tickets? Or did we decide what to do with that?
I don't think we ever changed any decision on that.
We didn't, because at the time, we were like, who's gonna enforce it? Because there was nobody here, remember? We went round and round with that.
And Marjorie wasn't rocking on, on administering it.
Right.
It's been on our agenda for, since I've been on the board. Just turned it into be a long time.
I, I kind of feel like we should, we should do it if we're gonna have the ordinances, because we can't really. We can put up parking signs all over, but if, if it's not gonna be enforceable, we, there's no need to even bother with them.
Well, like most of our ordinances.
I think Pat wants to comment.
Sheriff.
Thank you. So, uh, yeah, so sheriff's deputies, if in a contract with a town, can enforce local ordinance. Um, one of the things we've talked with, uh, previous, uh, boards and, uh, managers about is that. We will sometimes ask that we have our legal counsel review those ordinances. Uh, only because if, if there's something that may not be, um. Fully legal, not saying that they would be illegal, but sometimes you can miss things. But parking in particular, um, is something we can enforce. Uh, the challenge becomes more around what happens if you have, well, what a term called scoff laws. Uh, so individuals who continue to rack up tickets but fail to pay, who's gonna take that to court, who's gonna represent the town, those types of things, so. Uh, so yes, we can help enforce ordinance, but we can't necessarily represent you on the legal side of that in prosecution, so.
Okay. Something, something to think about, Mills, Millen, I almost called Nelson. What do you think, Millie? It makes sense, doesn't it?
It, it does make sense, and, um, I think we should certainly look in, into doing it.
Well, I mean, what the sheriff just said makes sense.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but you still think, you guys think this should still be done if you tickets and then after. Somebody gets a thousand dollars.
We'll have to talk about it then, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, what do you do?
You boot the tires, right?
Difficult to administer and apply, um, should be because. Parking tickets, so the first thing is that we had to hire a part-time employee. To, um, day, twice a day, monitor the parking lot and give out tickets. And then administratively in the office, you have to track the parking tickets by number and, um, make. Develop a system so that, you know, whether they're paid or unpaid. And then to your, to the point that's trying to be made here, the people that rack up. Ticket after ticket after ticket, how do you collect the, how do you collect that? And so that's another administrative, um, task. So. I often say, I mean, you can, you can have anything you want, and we can do this if you want to pay for it. But there is a, there's a cost to it as well, and the amount of money that you get from parking. Fees or parking tickets is not as much as you think it is, and if it, if you offset it by the expense. Then, I mean, and I know what, I know what, you know, people say, well, why do we have a parking ordinance? If we're not gonna enforce it and we're not gonna give out tickets. I'm just telling you the downside of. Trying to administer a program which I have, so there are, there are downsides.
No, I think though it's important to remember, we're not trying to build a parking lot where we're charging for parking. All we're trying to do is, we have a couple of trouble spots where people have parked illegally and it is an issue. I think if we leave it at that, we ought to simplify the process somewhat.
Well, and the, the biggest problem we have in, in all honesty is in Main Street is when we have.
The church.
Uh, well, the middle of summer, this is the time of the year, we have outstate license plates parked on Main Street. So, what, what, who's gonna chase those down for tickets? Who's gonna enforce them? Um, so yeah, that's, it's something to think about, something to consider.
Well, I mean, even the winner, the, one of the biggest problems is people pulling in, parking the wrong way.
I almost saw an accident the other day. Somebody pulled in front of the grocery store, in front of somebody else. They, they parked the wrong way and cut off that person in their desire to get to the grocery store. Law forbid if they had to walk from the parking lot.
Do we have an ordinance?
That is a traffic violation, no? I thought it was a, I thought it was a violation to cross. You couldn't find it.
If you're doing one that says park on the wrong side, is that night and they have their lights on?
Oh, that happens.
I couldn't find it. If you guys find it, then.
I mean, that's in our ordinance to park.
No parking back on the wrong side of the road.
One, one or two tickets and see what happens. Sometimes it's all it takes.
Is it in our, our parking order?
I don't think so.
Oh, it isn't in our ordinance?
Uh, there is a possible alternative that doesn't require administration, uh, and is cheap, which is warning tickets. Uh, that let them to, and it doesn't deal with scoff laws, because they're gonna do it anyway. But for a large portion of the people who might park where they shouldn't, especially in the summer. A warning ticket that says you violated something may, uh, have an effect.
I did that last summer. People parked on the sidewalk across from the church. I went in the church, I got a piece of paper and wrote on it. No, you're parking on the sidewalk, no parking on the sidewalk. I did it to two cars and I never saw the cars back there, because they could have just been.
Pam, we'll get your golf cart. You're hired.
All righty, you know, I also was thinking, Millie, that they probably thought I was crazy, running around with these ripped up pieces of paper. To put no parking, like you do at the flagpole, you've got that no parking sign facing the opposite way. You know, like the two signs together, we, we could do that downtown, put the no parking facing the wrong way.
I mean, try that. It's, it's, but it's, I don't believe it's illegal for them to park like that.
It's not in here anywhere.
And we don't have an ordinance saying it's not right, so. And again, like I said, you know, you can put all the signs out you want, but unless you're gonna take the sign off the post and smack them with it, they're not gonna.
I could start doing that in the summer. No, I'm only kidding. I would never do that. That's.
It does say that a duly authorized law enforcement officer may cause any vehicle parked in violation of this ordinance. To be towed or otherwise removed and placed in storage, I don't know where, at the expense of the owner. But it does not say you can't park backwards on Main Street.
Well, maybe we should add that to our ordinance.
Well, I think it's important to remember, though, when we started this issue, we were talking about the safety aspects. Specifically with the ambulance, with the fire thing, blocking the roads, so. I think we continue to focus on safety as opposed to trying to collect money. And we're trying to make sure that people park where they do not inhibit emergency vehicles or, or whatever. And I think if we do that, we can probably live with some warnings, and if it, that doesn't work, then we can move on to something more drastic. We have to.
It was like Marge out there putting the no parking.
It worked.
Things on the side.
It worked.
Well, I want to, um, address a, another issue on school street. There's a mailbox in the middle of the sidewalk. I think that needs. I don't know if the postal, if the postmaster is the person to talk to of the delivery postal. Delivery mailman, mail lady, but that is way not right. It should be across the road.
Or at least in the yard.
Well, there again, you're talking about a vehicle driving on the sidewalk to deliver mail. They can tell them where to put the, your mailbox doesn't have to be in front of your house, can be anywhere.
When I had mine put in, they, they told me where, where I needed to place it. In the works, so.
I think that one needs to be moved. That's, you have to walk. Okay, who's gonna do that?
Can you get down there with a claw wing and just?
We've, we've come close to it a few times. Um, I can maybe stop at the post office and see what they say.
Okay, thank you, because that one is not, that's in a bad place.
It may happen when I get back from the Caribbean, but it will happen.
Yeah, right.
If she comes back from the Caribbean.
Well, we hope you have a wonderful time. Okay, is there any more talk about this ordinance? What do we have to do? Just, um, make a motion to approve the amended ordinance?
Well, let me make those changes and bring it back. If I understand what those changes are, I think.
Okey dokey, so we are moving on to ten budget workshop. D? Oh, historical society. No, don't, don't point.
We, we apparently have a ten, had a ten-year lease with the historical society for the, for the building that we own. And it expired.
Was it at the end of? At the end of February, I have, I have the old one. February first, twenty twenty four.
So it had been in place for ten years and I'm not sure why I noticed it, but I said, oh. Um, so we're just looking to um, renew that lease for another ten-year period.
Good.
Um.
Need a motion?
If you agree, did you have a chance to look through this?
I did.
And if you agree, I'll just, we'll make a final copy, um. Make sure that the president of the historical society is on board and, you know, make a final copy and then we can get it signed.
Each month, twelve dollars a year. Why you think that's, they shouldn't charge anything? Usually it was like a dollar, I don't know. This on the monthly one?
Yeah, I don't know why.
Is that just?
Is it something that attorneys always put in a lease, just to have a um, an amount in there?
I mean, a lot of times it says, um, when you buy something, paid a dollar for it, so I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
And we certainly don't bill them for a dollar a year or whatever it is.
Dollar a month.
A dollar a month. Do they bring in twelve dollars annually to pay their rent? We're not gonna be victims because there'd be nowhere for all that stuff to go.
Is your proposal to just take that paragraph out?
It's not up to me, I just thought it was kind of a useless statement. If it's not.
I think there's a legal reason for their.
I would assume there might be.
I think there is too, but I don't know what it is.
I think we should leave it, it's only twelve dollars, so.
They're working out all right for the last.
So we'll just finalize the.
It's a hell of an asset.
We'll finalize it and bring it back for signatures.
Thank you.
That's good.
All right, does everybody agree that we're gonna go to ten A?
I would use it that.
Okay. Review departmental budgets approved by the budget committee.
So. Did you not keep them for yourself?
Or maybe it's.
Reason.
So the budget committee approved the public works, selectmen, administration, assessor, professional services, Washington School and Harvard Master. Uh, those budgets are, the summary of those budgets is in front of you tonight, I don't know if you're ready to just approve those departments.
Any major changes? From last year?
I don't know, let's see.
I didn't know I was gonna be quick, I forget all the details, but I don't remember any.
The um, you have them in front of you, right? The public works budget was up by fifty-four thousand, there were several lines that we learned this year, we, we just didn't budget enough. For instance, on the coal patch line. Um, we had only budgeted thirteen thousand last year and we've already way over expended that.
Should have stayed on pollen and sand and salt.
Think we're actually under with sand salt, but we also had the uh, the September, I mean, the October storms.
Hmm.
Which costs quite a bit of uh, extra material.
Yeah, road materials, we put in more for road materials. And then the other thing was that we were uh, almost out of the calcium fluoride.
Right, we haven't have budgeted for that for a couple of years.
Have we, uh, what, what provisions have we made in here for putting money aside for paving? We, we obviously.
That would be in the capital project budgets.
Yep.
This is um.
Just a minute, just over here.
This is just public doors.
It's not that, that money isn't in, this is operating, so um. We didn't give a raise to the selectmen, so if you wanna suggest something more for this. Um, the admin budget is actually only up by point seven nine percent. The assessor budget is down. Um. Because we had put money in last year for mapping and now we're gonna do that for your project and, and that we're gonna use the ARPA funds for that.
Yep.
When did that start, any idea?
This spring, they're gonna do the flyover. Professional services, the budget committee. I had suggested thirty-five thousand for legal and twenty thousand for engineering and they thought it should just be the reverse, twenty thousand for legal and thirty-five for engineering. So you're gonna have to be the decision makers.
We keep going over the legal.
We had a long discussion on this last year and I think we, I thought we made a pretty good.
I thought we did too.
Assessment, I'd leave it alone.
Thirty-five for legal?
Yes. But I don't, we have run into a situation, we don't wanna be running back and forth to the town, not saying we have to spend it, but I think we ought to keep it available so we have it, we need it.
And as it was, we ended up having to ask for more, so.
We don't wanna do that again, we don't have to.
And this uh, Washington School budget was up by five thousand dollars. Oh, that was service fees related to IT services. And actually, last year I had made a mistake, I had IT services under admin and under Washington School. We put it under Washington School because it involves all the employees. Um, assessor, code enforcement, so.
So um, legal and engineering, a stay in the managers.
That's what I'm hearing from you.
Um. I did want to revisit the um, whole fire hall, do you remember I mentioned it to you? About uh, the amount they wanted to put into reserve was twenty. I um, talked to Marge one day about it and I felt that was too high, I thought that was too much. I think we do definitely have to put something in there to cover, I mean, that particular amount of money is not designated for raising the building or whatever, it would be, if needed, it would come for anything, painting, any kind of maintenance. But I felt that ten thousand would suffice versus twenty, that's, that's quite a bit.
We did a lot of work this last year and it looks really good, I'm not sure how much more it needed.
And certainly if it came down to the fact that it was a, a real urgent issue to have it raised because we thought it was in peril, which it's, to raise it might be perilous to the building, but.
Right.
You know, I'm sure the, um, we'd figure something out in an emergency. Get Gabe on and.
I'll find a drop, dropping that down.
You're in favor of the campaign though.
I agree.
And if the camp comes to move it, we can get with it then, and that might not be as much as you actually think it would be.
Yeah.
Cause I, I just had to build a mood, you know, and it was not what you think it actually would be.
For change.
Did you say go?
Say for a change, not as much as you thought it would be.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I still think that we need to make sure that we don't lose sight of our own condition, and you know, I, I've gotta say, I think, I still think we should have sat down and as we're going into budget. Make sure that we spell out the priorities that the board has for the year and we haven't done that and I think we should.
Uh, tried to do it at the beginning of the year, but certainly we can go back.
I just, again, prior to budget, I really think it's important for the budget committee to have an idea of what we're looking at and what we're thinking about.
We did do that too, yes. I mean, we can come, just be, whatever you wanna do, it's fine.
I'd like to see us next meeting come in and just each have a kind of an idea where we think that the town should go next year, or what, what are the priorities for the? And for me, school is, is, I meant school, the roads are very high along with the police.
So you're saying we should discuss which road we wanna get paved first?
Yeah, and how much are we prepared to do?
Yeah.
So how much can we do with the stipulations on getting people out here? But we need to, we need to address this, it's not getting any better.
Millie?
I'm working on uh, on another uh, lead on paving as, as we speak. Um, and we do have a, a program that has looked at the roads or that I've put through the test of these, of the roads and prioritized for paving.
Who, who you, who you been talking to lately, Millie, on that?
Um, I, I would rather, if you guys don't mind, I'd rather wait for two weeks or, or once I, I, I've got another meeting tomorrow morning with some prices and such to see what, what's gonna happen there and, and if it's even possible. Um, if it is, I'll bring it back to the board.
All right, I, I have a contact at one of the paving outfits, um, I could talk to you about too.
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay, all set? With the.
So is there a consensus that these budgets?
Uh.
Are good or?
Drop the, the fire hall by ten thousand and then we're good.
Well, uh, I, I, I'll come back to you with the capital project budgets.
Yep.
Um, but I will make that amendment.
Yeah, what we saw tonight is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I assume we already chatted about ten B.
Yeah, we talked about it tonight.
Yeah. Uh, eleven, we pull the town manager.
Uh, I'm good.
Thank you.
Marge, I have a quick question, if you don't mind, who's backhoe's down behind the Walla District Building?
I, I didn't get.
There's a backhoe behind the Walla District Building.
Millie's throwing her hands up in the air.
I saw it the other day, I have no idea.
No, no, the swap shop. Is that at the swap shop? In behind where the trailers were stored and.
I don't know.
Millie doesn't know either.
Um.
I asked.
No, I just wonder why, why it's on town property if it's not.
I have no idea.
Oh, I just said, I'll take it.
Yeah, it's the same if that's the swap, that's the swap shop. You might not want it.
It's a donation to the swap shop, but just.
Is it? I don't know.
I have no idea.
Big bag, walk by there. Every day.
It's a very old backhoe.
Oh, do you, oh, you mean, do you think somebody dumped it there?
It's sitting there, I have no idea.
Millie, that's a good, uh, you can probably scope that one out.
I know, I noticed it yesterday and kind of went.
Power match has control of that spot, right, where he takes trailers and.
Well, it's a town.
I was gonna say, while you go on here, Millie, I noticed that, oh. Uh, just before, like pulling into Sunnybank around there, there's like a rug that's in the road. The road crew could cut, grab that and throw it in the back of the truck, one of the times when they're driving up by. I don't know, it's a huge rug, I don't know who's or what it is.
On the way to the dump maybe.
Yeah.
It's not rolled up like that, they're all flattened out, yeah.
No bump in the middle of it.
I was away for twenty years, we're Sunnybank.
Huh?
I said, I've been away for twenty years, we're Sunnybank.
Oh, like a, where Dallas Martin's trailer is.
Down past my mother's.
Oh, okay, all right. It's a rug.
A rug.
Yeah, it's a huge rug, if they get it through the dump truck when someone's going by and.
Okay, is this, is this the report of members?
Yeah, that was my report. And that, and I already mentioned that to Millie, like I said, we can talk later, I've got a, um, cause Lane is no more, Lane got bought out. Um, but I have a contact at Northeast or it's a, like a Spanish-owned company or something, the higher. Over it, I've got a couple of contacts there, I can pass along some numbers.
Okay, you really can talk about that. Is there anybody else have anything they want to say?
I do, but I.
Oh, don't hold back.
I was just wondering how the meeting went today, but I figured that would be opening a huge can of worms.
It was um, uh, very civil, uh, there were, you know, people spoke for and against and neither for nor against. Um, what I plan to do is, you know, take the notes that I made today and uh, what we've all discussed in the past and uh, submit a letter. Um, and that's due before the twenty-second, I believe, so that's my plan.
Did you ever hear that from Holly?
No.
I thought Alan spoke very well.
Yes.
I heard, I, I probably headed on the trap shop, not listening, I thought Alan spoke very well. Represented Alan very well.
Good.
Probably won't know, excuse me, I have to work out.
She said, please continue. Oh, I didn't know what she said, she's walking off, we can't really continue because I. Okay, we have the executive session next, so um, thirteen is executive session, so thank you for coming. Thank you, Peter, and I can't remember your little boy's name. Makaya.
So nice to meet you, haven't, haven't met you yet.
He's such a good boy, he doesn't.
Next, I know.
He did well to sit there.
Bye, Peter, thank you.
Second time he's been in.
I'm going to.
That was the first time I've ever seen in my life.
Oh, we can't.
Good job.
That's good.
Hopefully I'll ever see you here.
Well, no.
And I'm going to stop.
Yes.